Hey, Chris. If you're ready.
I am ready, sorry.
Okay, so thank you, everybody. Welcome to the Oakdale City Council. This is the regular meeting, November 9, 2022. Sarah, would you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingberston.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Ranky.
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So councilors, in front of us, we have the agenda for the evening. Upon review, do you see any changes or adjustments that you'd like to recommend? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adopted as presented. Also in our packet, we have the minutes of two meetings. One was the City Council Workshop from October 25th, and the second was the regular meeting of the City Council, also October 25th. Taking the workshop first, upon review, did you see any changes or adjustments that you wanted to make? Could I have a motion then, please?
Don't move.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the workshop meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Second is the City Council regular meeting minutes. Upon review, did you have any changes or suggestions for those many meeting minutes? Could I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those meeting minutes are also approved as presented. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is a time that we call open forum. Open forum is a time when anybody that's in the audience that wants to comment on anything that's going on in the city, they certainly can. What our process is, is that you approach the podium, state your name and address, and then share what's on your mind. Our tradition is that it's typically three minutes, and if there's somebody that has just stated something in front of you that you agree with, then you can just say that you agree with that person, and your weight of the comments will be noted. So is there anybody here that would like to comment? Well, I see North St. Paul Oliver. Good evening, Mayor Furlong.
Good evening, Terry Furlong, 2004 Eldridge Court, North St. Paul. Just wanted to take this time, as you know, my reign is done in North St. Paul at the end of the year.
Your reign.
My reign.
They're gonna go win a carnival on us.
Yeah, it does sound like winning a carnival. But I just wanted to go out and meet, not meet, but say a few words to people and, I guess, organizations that meant a lot to me or have meant a lot to me throughout my years. I know I was a business owner in the city of Oakdale for over 33 years. My family actually had a farm in North, or North St. Paul, in Oakdale. Started in 19, I believe around 1927. So my grandpa was actually one of the first persons that got Oakdale to be a city. So on the north end of Oakdale, he connected the two together, and along with him and some other civic-minded people at the time, connected that. He also donated land for the fire department over on the north end of Oakdale. It's a little trivia. Furlong Park was donated by him, named after him because of, I believe, everything that he had done in Oakdale. But anyways, I'm here because of the last four years as mayor. I believe what really helped me along was relationships, and these relationships were built over years, and it really helped through a pandemic, through a civil unrest. I appreciate the mayor. We had talked many, many, many times, along with what was going on in your city and how our cities could kind of coordinate and figure out how to process what was going on at that time. So what I'd like to do is present to you a mayor proclamation, and it's recognizing the city of Oakdale for being a good neighbor. So I'm on this side, Paul, so I'm sorry, but whereas, through the luck of geography, the city of North St. Paul and the city of Oakdale are neighbors. Whereas the city of Oakdale and city of North St. Paul have worked collaboratively in many ways. Whereas the city of Oakdale and the city of North St. Paul seamlessly collaborated to support each other and the surrounding community through a worldwide pandemic and unprecedented civil unrest. Whereas, like all good neighbors, both cities share equipment with each other and help each other with projects. Whereas, like all good neighbors, both cities have each other's backs when emergencies arise. Our fire departments and police departments work seamlessly together to support each other's missions and to provide emergency services. I think that's a really important part of our communities. Whereas the city of North St. Paul happily provides electricity to areas of Oakdale. Whereas Mayor Ranky and Mayor Furlong share a mutual interest in developing the businesses, livability, and recreation opportunities in the east metro. Whereas city staff regularly communicate with their partners on best practices and effective solutions. This is my favorite one, and I wasn't sure if I should put this in. Whereas the city of North St. Paul serves as a capable and successful training ground for Oakdale's staffing needs provided in your city with a finance director, accountant, and public works administrative assistant. Whereas the oak tree and the snowman are both proud icons of our communities, even though the snowman is by far the tallest of the two. Whereas someday, we will work together to tackle the Highway 120, Division Street, Geneva Avenue, Century Avenue, East County Line street project and interchange with Minnesota Highway 36. Whereas both cities pledge to always work together in friendship. Now therefore, I, Terrence J. Furlong, Mayor of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby recognize Oakdale, Minnesota with the Good Neighbor Award. So I want to just say thank you all for the years of the friendships and the partnerships.
Mayor Furlong, thank you very much. Can we do a quick?
Yeah. Laura, you got it?
Laura, you got it? Let me check.
That'd be great.
Okay, count to three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah. Nice. Thank you. Oh, careful. And please keep your face planted.
And by the, before you leave, Mayor Furlong. Again, it has been a, it's been a really good relationship, you know, getting to know you with your business, and then when we both had the crazy ideas to try to run for this office, you and North St. Paul and me here, and sharing lots of support back and forth, very appreciated. So this is amazing. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at open forum? Seeing none, I'm gonna kick into the consensus motions, and in front of us, we have A through E. So councilors, are there any of the consensus motions that you would like to pull? Could I have a motion then, please?
Make motion to approve consensus motions A through E as presented.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those consensus motions are approved as presented. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is a time that we call the Advisory Boards and Commissions. This is the time when each of us can, if our commission liaison to has met, we can give a short update. So the first commission is the Economic Development Commission. There was a meeting on November 2nd. The council liaison is Counselor Olson. Suzy, anything to share?
So during the meeting, we just did a quick update on the BRIA program, and some of the commissioners shared their experiences. Seems to be going very well and very enlightening, and I think we're gonna gather some really good information.
Good.
And then they also reviewed and approved their 2023 work plan.
Very good. Thank you. The second commission is the Environmental Management Commission. The council liaison for that commission is Counselor Zabel. There was no meeting, so no report. The third commission is the Planning Commission. The council liaison is Counselor Swedberg. There was a meeting on the 3rd of November. Colleen, anything to share?
Yeah, sure. It's a very good meeting, very long meeting. We had lots to review. So they reviewed and approved the comprehensive plan amendments that the council came up as we went through the 2040 comprehensive plan this summer and fall. So they reviewed that. Reviewed and approved the fifth edition Oakdale Senior Apartments PUD Amendment, Preliminary Plat, and Site Plan. Approved the ordinance amendment to Chapter 25 zoning to include brew pubs, brewery tap rooms, and micro distilleries in certain zoning districts. And then Glenbrook Small Area Plan. There were some concerns about, without knowing the plan, for Highway 36 and 120, Highway 120 changes, but approved the overall study. And there was a statement made by a few that said they were concerned not about really getting rid, this study is not really about getting rid of anyone, business or residential, but how do we move forward, come up with some options? And then, just like Counsel Olson said, reviewed and approved their EPC work plan for 2023.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next commission is the Parks and Recreation Commission. The council liaison for that group is Counselor Ingberston. There was no meeting. And then the last is the Tree Board. We're on the liaison for that group, and also there was no meeting. So the order bid, there are none, so we're gonna move into staff reports. First up is the Community Development. I think Mr. Getzloff, you can lead us to this one? This is the Willowbrook Parks Concept Plan and Preliminary Budget Approval.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'll walk you through this update. So as you recall, there was a workshop most recently held on October 11th to review the concepts for the three parks within Willowbrook, and at that meeting, in that informal setting, we did receive consensus from council on the parks' concepts to move forward with. And for Commons Park, that would be the base-plus concept. For Neighborhood Park West, that would be the base concept. And for Neighborhood Park North, it would be the base concept with the note to elevate the more basic, natural-based play equipment with some higher-end, more complex pieces of equipment moved in. As a result of the meeting, the next steps as discussed was to come back to council in a regular meeting to ask approval to set an overall budget for the project, and then that budget would be brought back again for inclusion in the capital improvement plan, which I believe is scheduled for the December 13th meeting. So staff has done that. We've gone back and looked at the budget for each of the parks. We wanted to make sure that we had all costs allocated, so there is 7% construction management contract costs added to that, added to that budget for the three parks, and we also added an inflationary factor, knowing that these would be built in sequence. So as a reminder, the master PUD agreement, which our attorney can speak in more detail of that if there is questions, the parks, our commitment is to build them to coincide with the development. So with setting a budget and getting this approval here tonight, this will give staff clear direction to move ahead with the first of those three parks, which is the Commons Park to be built next year. We already have people that are moving in and have moved into Willowbrook with more homes being constructed and the townhome community to the south as well. The total cost for the three projects combined is $5,450,000. The capital improvement plan will provide more details about the financing options for those projects, but likely will include a combination of tax abatement where the revenue generated, tax revenue from the adjacent properties, is put off in a separate fund to help to pay for the bond for the parks, along with maybe potential offsets from other sources within the city, but that'll be discussed as part of the CIP plan. I think that's everything here. There is the sense of urgency just to get going on this if we want to hit the 2023 construction season, then getting from the current design to a final design and vendor selection and bidding the project, all those things need to start happening pretty quickly here. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And just so I'm clear, tonight's purpose is to talk about moving this thing forward into the capital improvement plan. At that point, the staff's gonna come back to us after the final designs and final bidding and pricing and analysis for the final approval by the council on each of the three parks.
Mayor, that's correct. And what we'll do is, under our current contract, we've got design to 30%, which is kind of just a number, but by then, we'll understand topography, we'll understand the exact layout, dimensions, any of the vertical elements. So we'll take all three parks to 30%, so we have a design, but then we'll take the Commons to the 100%, and that's what we'll be returning to get final feedback from council on before the project moves forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, anything for Andy?
Mr. Mayor, one of the, you know, we've all worked on this development and these parks specifically for a long time, and so I think we would all agree that it's a very complex, delicate endeavor to get this to all stand up. One of the concerns I've had throughout the park conversation is an apprehensiveness to move forward with the concept plans until we have a better understanding of the specifics for financing. I know tonight, part of the ask is to just approve an overall preliminary number, but my concern remains that we haven't really dug into specifically how we're going to pay for these really large amenities. In talking with the city administrator earlier today, it sounds like there could be an opportunity for us to have that conversation at our next workshop and get some more specifics on how the city is going to finance these projects. And so my question, or maybe it's a comment or a request, is if my colleagues would consider tabling these items until we can have that financing conversation at our workshop in two weeks? So we're having the dollar conversation before we're signing off on any concept plans.
So I'm clear. Even tonight, we're not signing off on concept plans. We're saying that the 30%, I think what I heard was the 30% plans that are in place would be progressed to 100%, and I think that's appropriate.
So.
Because it's gotta come back to us for, come back to the council for a capital improvement plan, and I'll let your request stand, but I'd ask us not to do that and address the details at the next meeting for how this is actually gonna get paid, like your comment, but to allow staff to move forward with the three things that we've talked about three, four, or five times in fairly good detail.
So, sure. So my only concern there is, you know, it's great to talk about what we want in parks and what we think would be a natural fit for this neighborhood, but, you know, as we all know from our budgetary conversations, once you actually start talking about real numbers and where that money's gonna come from, feelings on what amenities are a priority or a desire or want or need do change, you know? And so my concern is that we might get into this conversation of how to find almost $5.5 million, and depending on how we get that money, feelings on base-plus, base-concept might change. And so if we've already approved the concept plans and sent them forward towards 100%, going towards 100%, I don't think there's the opportunity to change that. My argument is that, you know, perhaps we should line up or have a comfort level with where the money is coming from, and if we can get to that point and say, yep, this is a reasonable plan to pull together almost $5.5 million, we can move forward with it. But if we feel like the numbers don't work, you know, like any construction project, you're gonna have to change plans, and it might require cutting something or delaying something or finding another source of revenue. For me, it kind of feels like we're doing this backwards. We're approving concept plans before actually identifying where the money's coming from and ensuring that there's enough to pay for these amenities.
Councilors, any reactions? My take on it is that we should still move forward with approving all three as we've talked, but what are your other guys' preference? What do you want to do?
Is that, if, so if we vote on this tonight and there's consensus, are we legally bound to that $5 million number?
No, it's a preliminary budget. It's a capital plan that goes to 45, excuse me, 2024, 2025.
And we still have the flexibility to both change that number and fully dictate when, on the CIP, the actual building happens.
Yes, every year.
Every year.
Well, but the issue is, if Sand Tech is finalizing the plan and getting it to 100% and council decides, oh, we don't have the money, they're gonna have to go back and read through that plan, because it's no longer going to reflect the money we think we're spending on these parks. I mean, if we come in and say, okay, you know what, we really only have $4 million, but the design plans or the content plans are at 100%, are we just gonna go through and just ax out entire amenities, or does it need to be a reconfiguration of that space?
Well, I'll comment on this particular deal. It's different, these plans than, say, a building, say, the fire department expansion, renovation, or the public works. Those plans are complicated and detailed. We are talking about a park here, so we have a defined space that's already in the master agreement with the developers. We have stormwater that's already defined. We have areas defined, so it is, I think it is, a equipment reduction or playground equipment, you know, that type of a thing versus, oh, we're only gonna install sod in half this park.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I mean, but, I mean, when we're talking about amenities that are costing 300, 400, 500,000 bucks, I mean, I don't think it would necessarily be feasible to just say, okay, well, we planned for a playground on this half of the Commons Park, but now we're just gonna ax it out altogether and have nothing over there?
Or it just gets delayed, like you said. Tell you what, I think we understand what you're saying.
So my comment would be, would it hurt the program if we delayed it for, until the next meeting to have the discussion about the finances? Would it, if by delaying it for two weeks, would it hurt?
City Administrator Volkers.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, okay, so the Commons is the urgent, more urgent one, the Commons Playground, and just for clarity purposes, I think you were only stating we would go to 100% design for that park only.
Correct.
So I just want to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
On that. So Councilmember Swedberg, I answered a question. So the CIP will be reviewed, and the funding options, we will discuss next workshop, November 22nd. You could bring this item back for, my priority is Commons, right? We gotta get going on that. So that could delay for two weeks and come back to the next meeting. The whole thing could, but specifically, I'm worried about Commons. You can't delay it much more than that. We would argue, we're not gonna be able to get the park in '23.
Sure.
So that would be, if you're willing to have the discussion at workshop and then come back on that same night.
Yep.
And have the same discussion again, at least for the Commons, whatever you decide, then I think we can support that. Andy, is that agreeable to you?
At two weeks for the Commons, we can make that work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be my.
We can hold off. You're gonna hold off on the other ones anyways, not kick those to 100%?
Yes. So right now, under contract, we just have to get to 30%. Right now, we're in a, we're, call it, we're at concept level. That's the detailed design level, and then final plan level. But again, we wouldn't even want to go to 30 until we're really comfortable that this is the direction that council wants to go on those plans, because they get really expensive to revise.
Okay, I can support that. Kevin? Somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to table the Willowbrook Park Concept Plan and Preliminary Budget Approval until November 21st?
22nd.
22nd. Oh, yep. 2022.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the motion is tabled, or that motion is accepted, and the action is tabled till the 22nd. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thompson, our city attorney, anything for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, nothing specific, but happy to answer questions.
Councilors, anything for Jim? Okay, thank you, Jim. City Attorney, Ms. Volkers.
City Administrator.
City Administrator.
New job. Yeah. Yeah. Wow. Right. Not well, that's for sure. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I don't have anything additional to report. I'll take any questions off.
Councilors, anything for Chris? Okay, thank you. Council Presentations. I think I'll start on my left with Counselor Zabel.
Nothing for me.
Counselor Swedberg?
I'd like to say, put a shout out to Public Works. They had the dumpster there for pumpkins, and I used it, so it was really nice to be able to go over there and just put it in the dumpster. So, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Olson.
Nothing for me.
Councilor Ingberston.
Nothing.
I've got a couple. So first was that we had a ribbon-cutting, and this was held last Monday, October 31st, to celebrate the opening of County Highway 13. This is Ideal Avenue, Phase 2. So this project was completed through the partnership with Washington County, Oakdale, and Lake Elmo, and Ideal Avenue is the border between the two cities. Also, our indoor market at the Discovery Center, that's gonna be held November 12th and the 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is the perfect place for holiday shopping with over 20 local vendors offering a unique variety of items. Excuse me. So again, that's up at the Discovery Center, November 12th and 26th. Also, Oakdale's 10th Annual Art Discovery Fair is gonna be held Saturday, November 19th. This takes place from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, also at the Discovery Center. Also, find the perfect holiday gifts and engage with the local artists and crafters at this free-to-attend event featuring paintings, photography, woodworking, jewelry, and more. And finally, election day is tomorrow, Tuesday, November 8th. Just a reminder that Oakdale voters will see two questions on the ballot to consider a sales tax to help in funding, help in funding and expanding and remodeling police facility and also a new public works facility. The total sales tax, if approved by voters, to fund one or both projects will not exceed 1/2 of 1%. That's the equivalent of 50 cents on a $100 purchase. So polls are open tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can find your polling location on the city of Oakdale website or at minvotes.org. Thank you. Last up on the agenda is claims. So we've had a chance to review the claims presented to us, and this is for the time period, October 26th, 2020 through 2022 through November 7, 2022, in the amount of $889,364.51. Councilors, upon review, were there anything that you wanted to question or get more information on? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those claims are approved as presented. Then those claims are approved as presented. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No move.